I'm the City of Buchanan City Commission. This is a public forum special meeting. My name is Brenda Hess and I'm the Mayor of Buchanan. Tonight, I'm joined by Dale Turney and Carla Cole, Dan Bygansky, and Pat Moore. These are your city commissioners. Over here to the left, we have Gladys Bybee, our city clerk, and she'll be taking notes. We also have Bill Marks, the city manager, and this is our city attorney and his name is Rick Rock. We would like to thank you for coming to this meeting this evening and for having interest in this very important issue. But before we get started, I would like to go over some procedures to help keep this meeting moving forward. This is just kind of a reminder, this is an emotional issue for some people. We're all going to have different opinions, but we're all still neighbors and friends. Life is better here in Buchanan and it's because of all of us, no matter what our opinions are. And to that end, our house rules will be as follows. First of all, there will be no name-calling, no shouting, no interrupting, and no talking over each other. We will have respectful discourse. In addition, we are asking that everyone keep their sidebar conversations to a minimum. We want to hear everything everyone has to say from that microphone, and it's difficult for us as commissioners and other people to process what people have to say when they are side-conversations. We ask that if you need to have a conversation, to please step outside, whether it's someone here in the room, or if you need to take a conversation on your cellphone, please don't step into that vestibule because we can hear every word you say. It's like a cave, and it's also kind of like a magnifying thing, and you will overpower anyone in this room who's just really bad acoustics, so if you could step all the way outside, we would really appreciate that. Each person here tonight will be allowed to have three minutes to state their opinion. Please say your name and address clearly for the record. We will be giving citizens, city residents, first priority in speaking, but we are also interested in hearing from people outside the city, but we will kind of reserve your comments to the end if we have time. I will be stopping each citizen at the conclusion of the three-minute mark so that we can hear from as many people as possible. When your time is up, please return to your seat quickly and quietly so that the next person may have their turn. We may need some time between comments to answer questions, or maybe make a couple of comments if we feel something needs clarification. If you are not comfortable speaking, you may write your concerns and leave them here, or you may email them to the city manager, myself, or any of the commissioners. If you want a response from us, please make sure to provide your name and contact information along with a good time to get ahold of you. We understand that public speaking is not comfortable or easy for everyone, but your opinions and ideas are still very valuable to this process. There will also be an additional meeting this coming Monday at 7:00, and you are also welcome to attend that meeting as well. So with those clarifications, we would like to get started. Gladys will be conducting a roll call.
Here.
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 Yes.
Okay. We would like to start this evening. We're going to break the meeting into two 45-minute sessions. And this evening, we will be starting with people who support medical marijuana. So we'll just try to, if you could raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and I'll send you up to the microphone over there. The microphone adjusts up and down, and please, again, make sure you state your name and your address so that everyone can hear and Gladys can get it into the record in case we have questions later. Don't everybody jump up at once.
So everybody's against?
Nope. Anyone that's for. We're going to hear from the pro people first.
Do you want me to start with that letter?
Okay. Well, since no, we'll break the ice. We have a letter that was given to us, and we're going to have Commissioner Moore go ahead and read this letter in favor of this proposal.
This is letters addressed to the commissioners. "My husband and I are building a home on Main Street here in Buchanan. Since the beginning of time, humans have relied on the roots, fruit, flowers, and leaves of plants for survival and to alleviate ailments. For centuries, medicine men and women have plucked and dried the leaves of the marijuana plant to help people with nausea and seizures. In the 1930s, in an attempt to legislate behavior, prohibition lumped the marijuana plant with synthetic drugs and alcohol, making it illegal to grow or consume a plant that has been around for millennia. In the 1960s, a team of Israeli scientists isolated the compound in the marijuana plant that quelled seizures and nausea. Now, by law, if a compound occurs in nature, it cannot be patented by anyone. However, if you can duplicate that compound in a lab and tweak it a little, you can make a patented drug to sell with FDA approval. This is exactly what a pharmaceutical company did in the 1970s, and the artificial drug Marinol was created. In 1980, my mother was diagnosed with stage-three breast cancer. After amputating her breast, the doctors subjected her body to the toxic brew of chemotherapy. She lost her hair, she lost her fingernails, her toenails, her memory, and she lost her ability to keep food down. My mother's doctors prescribed Marinol for her nausea, but here's the irony. To be effective, the little white pill has to stay in your stomach for at least an hour. She couldn't even swallow water. How was this drug supposed to help her? It didn't. But that didn't matter to the drug company, which collected the payment from her insurance company and copay. She still couldn't eat, and because she did not have access to the crumbled leaves of a plant that used to be grown all over our region, my mother continued to suffer." Fast-forward 36 years. I too was recently diagnosed with breast cancer a couple of weeks ago. I am grateful to the compassionate Michigan voters who saw the benefit of allowing sick people supervised access to a natural option. The question then is this: Is this community going to allow regulated access to a plant that can give immediate relief to patients with seizures and nausea, or continue to protect the profit margins of the pharmaceutical industry? I urge you to heed the better angels of your compassion and approve this measure. Thank you for your consideration and service to this community. Sincerely, Kathleen Gabriel-Pettigame.
Okay. I'm waiting for volunteers, anybody that is here to speak in favor of medical marijuana.
I'm not from Buchanan.
Okay. Is there anyone from Buchanan first before we let him have a turn?
I'll speak.
Okay. Make sure you say your name and your address, please. Thank you.
My name's Eric Nordike. I live up here on 309 Arctic Street. I moved here from another part of the country because I have post-traumatic stress disorder and have very bad brain injury, and pharmaceuticals weren't working. I've tried to take my own life in the past, and I drive to Lansing to get my medication, and I don't bother anybody. I don't want any problems, but it would help me if it was closer, and it would help other people like me. I'm not going to tell you where I think it should or shouldn't be. You know, there's, obviously, that would be something else to look at. But what I'm saying is, for people like me, it could be the difference in my life or death. I shake tremendously. I've gone to Hilltop Cafe here in town and I've eaten. They've been tremendously wonderful, wonderful to me. When I get upset, they've boxed up my food. They've helped me like family. I moved here because this community is like family, and I think of you all like family. And I'm just asking that if we could put it somewhere, that would help me very much, and I would be very grateful. And I don't want to see, you know, anybody harmed. I've served overseas in Iraq, and that's how I've ended up this way. And I would be very happy to answer questions, you know, if you had any for me. I could leave my contact info if anybody here would like to, you know, ask me, you know, how it's helped, and I can, you know, tell you how it's helped me with my struggle.
Can you spell your last name first?
N-O-R. D-Y-K-A-D. Thank you.
What years did you serve?
I served from 2000 to 2004. I served '03 and '04 in Iraq, 467 days consecutively.
I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Okay.
I'm Johnny Wallace, 1002 North Red Bud Trail. I've started this whole campaign on the whole marijuana Buchanan dispensary thing. I'm pretty proud of what I've done so far. I used to be on pharmaceuticals myself, and I walked into the pharmacy like this because they didn't give me my pills for the weekend, and I swore I'd never do it again, and I haven't been back to that pharmacy. And I still got the pain. I still got the bottle today, and I won't take those things anymore. I'd rather do marijuana.
Okay. Thank you, Johnny. Next up, anyone in favor?
I'm Alan Robant, 114 East Front Street, and I approach this a little bit differently in terms of economic development and the potential for job creation in our industrial parks. The empty ElectroVoice building, where facilities, most of this will be hydroponic, could utilize the space that doesn't produce any tax revenue, and it would also employ local people. Thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead, Sheila.
As a resident of Buchanan, because I want you to understand compassion. The struggles that people go through for the treatment of their medical issues are dramatic, and drugs don't always work. Pharmaceuticals don't always work. Do I agree with having a dispensary for medicinal marijuana in this community? Yes, I do. But I do not want recreational use to happen in this town. But on a compassionate standpoint, I think we need to do this. Too many people are suffering, and with the pharmaceuticals that are not working, this is to alleviate their pain and allow them to heal and get well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Why don't you go ahead?
My name is Josh Elper, 14552 Red Arrow Highway in Lakeside. And I think one of the things that's important to remember is that we're not talking about whether there should be medical marijuana in Buchanan. There is already. As a matter of fact, in Michigan, there are over 200,000 medical marijuana patients that are already registered, and as many as 5,000 growing facilities. So the real question is whether, in the last, I believe it's eight years that the current MMMP has been operating, there's been a lot of challenges by state police and by all kinds of different counties and cities. And so one of the things that's happened is it's become a little bit difficult for these patients that you've been hearing from to get any consistency in their medicine and to get any consistency. There's been a hesitation for people, especially in Marion County, to invest in the current caregiver program because the state police have been very much against it. And one of the aspects of the new program is specifically taking into account the state police, and there's been a fund. If you read through the new laws, specifically, the state police are getting funds to take care of that extra cost. And so I think what we're saying is that the product right now that's out there is unregulated and not really safe for the patients. And the, sometimes the motivation of the people that are in the business right now is not from compassion, it's only related to profit. And so by making it regulated and by allowing test facilities and manufacturing facilities and real registered, you know, sort of kitchens and food production facilities, this becomes really more of a high-tech manufacturing. And from, to, for Alan's point, from an economic development standpoint, you know, if you look at places like, let's say, Three Oaks, for example, that has a distillery, you know, the distillery has a bar in it, but that distillery sells all over Michigan, and as a matter of fact, also sells in 13 states. And so by focusing on the manufacturing side and making Buchanan a growing center, we already grow all of the great fruit for the whole country by making it a growing center and a processing center. Everybody's focused on the dispensary side, and dispensaries are important, but the real economic development here could be leading the way in terms of quality manufactured red bud from Buchanan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Young, on Arctic Street in Buchanan.
I'm Margaret.
I, I didn't know whether to get up on the for marijuana dispensary or against it, but I'm not against it, and that's why I wanted to speak. I'm not against it, and I don't think that we should tell people when they have diseases and they're in pain how they should be treated. We can't do it with any other medicine, so if medical marijuana will help somebody and it's legal, I think that's their choice and not ours. I would ask that they not put it in a residential district. I think there is crime related to any drugs because people want them, and the ones that don't want to pay for them will commit crimes, and I think the chief will agree with me with that. So I would just ask, I mean, there's a whole video place on the top of the hill that's empty. I would just ask that they not put it in the residential districts.
Thank you, Margaret. Julie?
Jean.
Jean, okay.
Uh-huh. And I live right on Bluff Street. The place where he's talking about, my street is on the other end, he's on the, uh, the end next to Red Bud. The children is going to the store back and forth there. Plus, there's three or four churches right in that area of where his place was.
Okay. Jean, can you hang on a minute? We're still trying to hear from pro people in favor. Do you mind waiting?
I'm not just, I'm not against marijuana.
Okay.
I have some in my family that do marijuana, but they can't come in my house and do it. They can't come in my house if they smelling like it because that's not what I want. So I, whoever wants to have it, that's fine. I'm not trying to go against anyone. If it's going to help, they help.
Okay.
But it should be at a place where it should be a business and not in the residential area. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm William Haas, 1315 State Line Road, Niles, Michigan. I do believe the question here tonight was whether there was an actual need for this in the community. As you can see, there's a definite need. There's a definite need. And done correctly, nothing but good is going to come out of this. Only thing you're going to do, you know, is take, take this off the black market. You're going to take it out of the streets. You're going to take it away from the caregivers, and you're going to put it into a structured environment. We went through the, the whole law the other day. You know, there, there is such a strict criteria to this, and we're going to have to follow such strict laws, there's no room for error in this. Either we do it right, or we get our licenses pulled, you know, and the repercussions after that are going to be enormous. So, especially with Marion County. Marion County isn't going to let us get away with nothing, and the only thing we're going to be allowed to do is procure marijuana, manufacture it, process it, test it, and deliver it to, to registered patients across the state, which is what should have been done from the beginning. But instead, we have all this chaos that goes on with caregivers, tons of it's flowing out into the black market. It's time to get a grip, pull it into structure, do something good for the community out of it. The only thing is, and I think you guys are a great bunch, but I think that it's going to boil down to the applications, and it's going to end up your guys' job, unfortunately, to sift through all of that and figure out who is actually capable, willing, financially, the whole nine yards. So that's really the question. And with that, I'll leave the rest of it up to you guys. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Vanessa Burns, 808 West Front. Number one, there's room for error in everything. When dealing with humans, expect something to go wrong because we make mistakes. So something could happen with dealing with humans. I'm a hospice social worker. Marijuana works. My patients use it. They love it. It works. I'm all for it, but not on Bluff Street. Thank you.
Thank you. We still have time allowed for people who would like to speak in favor, so I don't want to cut anyone off. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of this measure? Okay. We can always add more time at the end if someone, you know, changes their mind. All right. So now we'll go ahead and we'll hear for people who aren't necessarily in favor of So one at a time, you can approach the microphone. Please make sure you state your name and your address. Thank you.
My name is Linda Fox, 3213 Knight Drive with a K, Buchanan, Michigan. Unlike you gentlemen there, I am a therapist, family and children, and a lot of that is also dealing in drug and alcoholism. I have treated a lot of them from the prisons, in juvenile centers, in schools, and in their homes, and it's not an easy job. On top of that, my husband and I lost a niece on July of 2015 from a drug overdose, and she had left a one-and-a-half-year-old baby. Four months later, her brother died from a drug overdose. It's been very, very hard on the family. It's been hard on their friends and everybody else. But, and don't get me wrong, I like drug addicts, especially when they're over there and I'm over here, you know? Because when you're in a prison, they're going to stay there while I walk out. But it's still, and last, the other day, I read in the South Bend paper where people said, "Well, marijuana is not a gateway drug," so I feel so much better about that. Now, does anybody want me to read from this good book? Or you take my word, marijuana is a gateway drug. It always has been, and it always will be. And until people start realizing this, you're going to have one problem after another, after another, after another. And I have to ask the city council, how much money do you think you're going to make off this to improve Buchanan? Does anybody have any? Are you guys just going to ignore me? Okay. I got to figure this out the other day, and my golly, if you took in a million bucks, at 3 percent, you're only going to get $30,000, right? Does that really sound like a lot of money that you want to quote "sell your soul" for? The fact that we are right off of I-94, and people travel from Chicago to Detroit, Chicago, Detroit, what do you think is going to happen out there when they find out that you've got a dispensary here? Seriously, what are they going to do? It's one thing to be worried about the criminals in your backyard that you know about, but it's worse to think about the criminals that are coming and going from here that you don't And I don't know what anybody could say. I, yes, feel sorry for these people that are old and they're hurt and they're crippled. My God, I got ran over by a poultry truck on February 13th of 1981, and I haven't been the same since.
Okay. I'm sorry, your three minutes are up, but thank you.
Well, you're more than welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Who would like to be next?
My name is Jeanie Harris, and I live at 320 Bluff Street. So my home would be right down the street from this dispensary that someone wants to put there. And this is the fourth meeting I've been to about this because I don't want it in that area, and I will continue to come to the meetings until the city commission says, "No, we are not going to put it there." Like Mrs. Burns said, this is a neighborhood where there's small kids walking back and forth to school. You have single women there. And as I mentioned to the city commission on Monday, we had a drug-infested neighborhood. We have not forgotten that. That left scars with us because of what all went during that time. And I have to say, I think it's very inconceivable that someone would even approach you, that you would maybe even think about putting it in a neighborhood. There's so many other places around, like the gentleman talked about ElectroVoice, and someone mentioned the Old Telgators Building. There are so many vacant buildings in Buchanan. So again, I ask the city commission to please drop the idea of Bluff and Red Bud Trail. You know, I have to say that I understand the people that need this medical marijuana. I don't have a problem with that. I would never sign anything about it to support it because I just don't believe in that. But for those who need it and want to use it, that's fine, that's their business, but I just do not want to see it on the corner of Bluff and Red Bud Trail.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeanie.
My name is Cindy Benson. I live at 212 Cecil Street.
Hi, Cindy.
I've heard comments about the location and problems with that. I agree, it should not be in a neighborhood. ElectroVoice is in my neighborhood.
(laughter)
Okay? I don't want it there.
(laughter)
I am not against people taking this. I firmly believe that if they're taking it, they're driving on the roads and they're putting my life in danger because it does affect you. But if you need it, I assume you're going to use it, and I, fine, but I don't want it in my neighborhood. I don't want it in their neighborhood. The only place in town that I would think it would be okay would be in that little bank building that's hooked to the police department.
Right.
That's it.
(applause)
So please consider, there's children in my neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Stark School would be exactly, what, a hundred feet from ElectroVoice? I live on the other end of that street. I don't want it there. There are schools where, they are mentioning with Bluff Street over here in Redbud, there are schools where there are a lot of empty buildings, a lot of children in those areas. If you want it somewhere, put it right next to the police department. Thank you.
My name's JT Williams, and I guess they brought out a pretty good point, that we're not against the marijuana, just the location is more of the problem, you know? We do not want it in a family-oriented area, where you're raising children, you have your churches all around you, and you've got single women there, because sooner or later, the traffic is going to become undesirable. You're going to have someone coming into your neighborhood that you don't want there. And the site that we're concerned about in the center of the three churches, it's sort of a slap in the face to want to put a dispensary right in the middle of a bunch of churches. You're going against your values, you know? We have a grower. I think it's deplorable that we even have a grower in the community. It should not even be grown in the community, you know? If we're going to have undesired traffic, if we don't fight the infiltration of drugs, what's going to happen when they want to bring other drugs in? Are we going to try to find a way to justify bringing those in too? It's very inconsiderate that anyone would want drugs to be grown in a residential district or exposed to the children or the single women, and we do have a lot of single women on the north side of town. Parks, skate parks, churches, all of that's welcome, but a drug house, it has a very bad sound to it, a drug house. You know, legal or illegal is still a drug. If we don't want it near our schools, why would we want it right outside of our front door in a residential district? Why do we reject marijuana all these years, and all of a sudden, we're going to caress the idea of growing and distributing marijuana in our neighborhoods? We don't want to deprive anyone that needs the use of this drug. We don't want to deprive them of that use if they can go and get the drug as a prescribed antidote or what have you to their ailments. I had a son that was hit by a pickup truck, and it broke his neck, his back, his pelvis, punctured his lung, and the first thing that was prescribed was marijuana, and he uses it for medicinal purposes, you know? So, it has some values, you know, but not in a residential district, where you're trying to grow your children, you're trying to attend your churches. It's just not the right area, and that's what I'm primarily concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you, JT.
Hello. My name is Phyllis Taylor. We're Mount Zion Cathedral, Praise eleven oh two, North Redbud Trail. I agree, we're not against this medical, and if you need it, you need it, but can you imagine the traffic? We have summer programs with the children in the summer, and the traffic already is overwhelming. So, to put the dispensary there, it would just be overwhelming for our children in the summer. And we've been there over forty years. I've been there seventy-seven, we've been there over forty years. We have left our door open and got calls that our door was open. We don't have any problem with break-ins or anything. Can you imagine all the traffic in the area? We don't want to deal with that. God bless you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think there's enough, I think most of the city people that were interested in speaking have already done.
All right, I want to start out by saying, I don't want it anywhere. Why push a problem somewhere else?
Okay, hang on a second. We need your name and your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm angry. My name is Eric Hagman. I live on West Front Street. I don't want it anywhere. Why should we push our problems somewhere else? Now, I worked in behavioral health, both on an adolescent unit and an adult unit, and I saw all the problems. Sorry, it is a gateway drug. It is addictive, I don't care what people say. Also, as far as marijuana goes, I had doctors tell me that, yeah, marijuana works, but everything that works, there's something that works better. Now, let's get to some other things. First of all, before I was an adult, I was raised in some pretty dangerous areas. You guys don't know what a great area Buchanan is. I chose to live in Buchanan because I want to raise my family in Buchanan, because it's a wholesome place. Why do we want to get rid of that? I have a grandson that lives on Arctic Street. I don't want him raised, being exposed to this. It's going to bring in all sorts of undesirables. Also, right now, marijuana is legal for medicinal purposes. That's going to change. That's a ruse to get to make it recreational. I know people that live in Colorado. They say, "Oh, they're smoking on the streets now." Maybe illegal to do it on the streets, but it's so prevalent, that's what they're doing. Do we want Buchanan, which to me is like a Norman Rockwell-type of town? Do we want kids walking down the street, toking a joint? I don't think that's for our community. I mean, this is nuts that we're even bringing it up. Revitalizing the downtown district? We can do that economically. Let's bring in a strip joint. I can guarantee you that we'll have all kinds of business in Buchanan. Is that what we want in our town? This is a great place. I love Buchanan. Buchanan is a gem. I don't want to see it pushed over there, and those people say, "Push it over there," those people say, "Push it over there." It's going to create traffic, it's going to be sold on the street to other people, it's going to cause all kinds of problems, and we could poo-poo it and say, "Oh, well, it helps this person, that person." It's going to create all kinds of problems, and we don't want that in our wonderful town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I still have three minutes.
I didn't tell you to stop, did I?
You used to drive into Buchanan.
Excuse me, I didn't tell you to stop, but you need to tone it down a little bit. Thank you.
I'll tone it down, but this has my blood up.
Thank you. I know. But we agreed at the be-
I'll take a breath.
We agreed to reasonable and-
I agree.
-being cool. Okay?
Let me make my last point.
Thank you. Don't make the mayor mad, thank you.
You just, you used to drive into Buchanan, and there was a sign. It said, anybody know?
Drug-free zone.
Drug-free zone. That sign isn't there anymore.
I pastor the church here in Buchanan, right up on Redbud Trail. If the drug helped you, fine, but as different one has said, we don't want it in our neighborhood. We just don't want it there. Where you going to put it? I don't know, but we don't want it there. Our church, as my wife said, we went home one New Year's, and the police called me and said, "Your church door is open." Nobody went in the church. We never had no problem or nothing in Buchanan. So, if you bring drugs in, you're going to have a problem. And like the gentleman just said, it's going to be smoking on the street, doing other things. And I'm pretty sure in Buchanan, you've got a lot of folks around here smoking, especially these young folks, older folks too. They smoking it, it ain't legal, and they ain't going to stop smoking it. So, I think it would be a problem to bring it in the neighborhood. As the lady said, she live up there, she said she don't want it in her neighborhood. So, seemed like nobody wanted it in their neighborhood, but they're not kicking against it if it helped you. Now, some of you know, and maybe I know a little, I never really drank, I never really smoked, I never really used drugs, but I used marijuana one time, a couple times. It make you feel good, but after that, you're right in the same state again. So, you know, you're going to have one problem or another. So, I would say not in our neighborhood, and I wouldn't want to put it in nobody else's neighborhood. Thank you.
My name's Gregory Hines. Live on six-twenty-nine Abel Road, Buchanan. I know you folks, and you're right, you'd say, "Well, anybody can look stuff up and read it." Well, you're right, but it's facts. This is from the Centers for Disease Control, Surgeon General's Warning on Marijuana. Memory impairment, slowness of learning, impaired lung function, similar to that found in cigarette smokers, reproductive harm, impaired immune response, adverse effects on heart function. Also talking about drugs' behavioral and psychological effects, the anti-motivational syndrome. What's that sound like? Anti-motivational syndrome, characterized by a pattern of energy loss, diminished school performance, harmed parental relationships, other behavioral disruptions associated with prolonged marijuana use. How does marijuana affect a user's life? Heavy marijuana users more often report themselves, they report the following: lower life satisfaction, poorer mental health, poorer physical health, more relationship problems. Users also report less academic and career success, linked to more job absences, accidents, and injuries. I'm not sure why you want to do that, just because, as Pastor said, just because it, well, obviously, but at that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, was that from the Center for Disease Control, did you say? The CDC?
CDC.
Okay. Thanks.
Was that for minors, or was that adults? Does it say? Did it say?
Both. Because for under the twenty, under twenty-one, it's very true. Very, very true. I agree with that a hundred percent.
Norma.
Norma Ferris, three oh four North Oak. I do not want it here. People that use it, keep buying it where you buy it. We don't need it in Buchanan.
Thank you, Norma.
Would you like for them to be read now?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay. This one is dated February sixth, twenty seventeen. I'm sending this email to each of our Buchanan City Commission members, because you will be discussing something that really concerns me and others in the community. Because of health issues, I am not able to do much of anything in the evenings, so it is difficult for me to make the meetings of the city. As some of you know, I've been involved with the Neighborhood Watch program for several years here in Buchanan. As such, I get to speak with a lot of people about things that are going on in our great city, positive and not so positive. I love Buchanan because it is family-friendly city. We have a spectacular police department, and those who hold other positions within the city government are very special people. I have worked to help keep our city safe and have tried to keep the police department and our city manager abreast of what the concerns are that people have that come to me with. There are those who don't feel good about going directly to our city officials for their own personal reasons. I have received phone calls and have had conversations with people concerning an article that was in the South Bend Tribune a few weeks ago. The article said that the city of Buchanan will be considering what they want to do about the opportunity of having a business that will be involved in the growth, processing, and selling of marijuana within the city limits. All with whom I have spoken are very opposed to such a business in our family-oriented city. We realize that the city would gain some revenue by allowing this business to come into the city, but the concerns outweigh the plus. One, what kind of people will be drawn into the city because of this business? Yes, it may be here for those who need medical marijuana, but what will happen if, when marijuana is legalized? Two, it has been brought to my attention that there have been some breaking and enterings and/or home invasions within the city and the area that involved homes that were growing medical marijuana, legally and or illegally. I'm not sure how accurate some of these charges are, but if this business is allowed in our city limits, how can we be assured that this type of thing won't increase at the business location and draw more of this kind of activity within our city? Three, if I had children, I wouldn't want them living around a business like this. The possibility of having some pretty shady individuals hanging around it is very great. Four, we have many children that walk the streets within our city, whether going to school or going to play in our parks. They go down and play along the creek, in their yards, and in our beautiful family parks. We need to consider the safety of these children and how it would be endangered with a business like this and the type of people it would draw to Buchanan. These are some of the concerns that are out there, so I'm respectfully requesting that you both know of the growing, processing, and selling of marijuana within the city of Buchanan. Please do not release my name in connection with this email.
Thank you, Gladys. And you said you have another one, too?
Yes, the second one is dated February second.
Thank you.
Dear City Commission, I want to express my opposition to the proposed medical marijuana dispensary within the city of Buchanan. As I stated at your last city commission meeting, we have been revisioning this community. Life is better here, a promised community, small town, big hearts, buck town, and home of the herd. We are also now the recipients of the Buchanan promise. This is a community where families help families, and socialization happens at the Friday night football game or at the ball field. Our goal is to attract new families to Buchanan, a place that is safe to raise children. Bringing the dispensary into town is in direct conflict with everything that makes Buchanan the town that it is. I'm researching other states or communities who have already allowed dispensaries or have legalized marijuana. I found facts that are of concern. Property crime rates, burglary, motor vehicle theft, and larceny have risen ever since two thousand and twelve in Seattle, Washington. In Denver, homicides have risen fourteen point seven percent from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen. Crimes in Denver has grown by forty-four percent. Marijuana citations have increased over three hundred per year. These statistics worry me, and I wonder what will happen to the crime rate in Buchanan should a dispensary be allowed. I also worry about our school-aged children. Dr. Harvey Burnett, a Buchanan police officer, is in our schools regularly, teaching the Drug Abuse Resistance Program, DARE, to our children. Our students sign a pledge not to use drugs while within the Buchanan community schools. What kind of message will the adults of this community send to our children if we allow the dispensary within the city of Buchanan? Why would they listen to what we say while they watch what we do? Again, this is in direct conflict with everything Buchanan stands for. What about our high school? We live within a drug-free school zone. Students understand that should they choose to bring marijuana within our school zone, they will be expelled from our district and no longer be able to set foot on school grounds. Yet, we are discussing adding a dispensary within a couple of miles to the high school boundaries. This is, again, in direct conflict with everything we are trying to teach our young adults. Last but not least, we need to think about how marijuana use affects school, work, and social life. According to the National Institute of Drug Abuse, someone who smokes marijuana daily may be functioning at a reduced intellectual level most or all of the time. Several studies have also linked heavy marijuana use to lower income, greater welfare dependence, unemployment, criminal behavior, and lower life satisfaction. In a study done by Patrick Condren, M.S.C., M.A.C., A.D.C. In a study done by Patrick Condren, M.A.C., A.D.C., marijuana use in adolescents associated with altered brain development, a decline in cognitive function, and poor academic performance. Adolescents who use problem-solving have problems also in the areas of attention, memory, and learning. Marijuana use has been connected to increased absences and decreased work performance. There are also more work accident, which lead to more workers' compensation claims. While I understand this is a discussion about a dispensary, we need to think beyond the building to the ramifications of the community that would surround it. This may be just a building to some folks, but I for one think this will affect our community in a very negative way. Again, I am opposed both as a Buchanan City resident and as the Buchanan Community School Superintendent. Sincerely, Dr. Andrea Vanderland, Buchanan Community School Superintendent, Buchanan City resident.
Did any commissioners have any correspondence that the rest? Those were the only two correspondences I got. Did you guys get any other? No?
I just want to comment.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Your Honor, we did receive another, some questions from the last meeting we had. However, that person stood up and spoke today.
Okay.
And these were questions posed to the commissioners that was emailed out this week. So I don't know if you want to address those during your comments later on or not.
It was my understanding that tonight was just a gathering of information from citizens. It really wasn't to hear our comments, but I guess we can kind of think about that while you're reading that and make a decision.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Dear Ms. Harris, we are writing to endorse your stance against the proposed marijuana dispensary. We support your efforts 100 percent and admire your courage in speaking out against this abused, I'm sorry, this observed project, which will surely damage our community. Please be aware that you do not stand alone. There are many people who you do not know that want this proposal defeated. We have sent a letter to City Manager Bill Marks voicing our stringent opposition to this, to his support for this project. Thank you again for your courage and for your service to the people of Buchanan. Citizens for Responsible Government. And this was Mrs. Harris that turned this in.
Did you say Citizens for Responsible Government? I'm sorry, I'm trying to write this all down.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go right ahead. No, you can. Yes, no, please, just make sure you say your name and your address.
And I wrote mine out. Paula Witherow, 3521 Chamberlain Road, here in Buchanan. So I have some concerns. I've read a few of the articles in the South Bend Tribune and a letter that was written from a business owner to the city, the South Bend Tribune, Niles Leader, Marion County Record. And these are, so don't take anything personal if, you know, it's you that I'm talking about. But concerning the location or the involvement of a cannabis dispensary in the Buchanan City Limits, isn't anything that should be taken lightly? And to even consider a downtown location? That would have long-term devastating effects on our town. I read a letter by Mr. Robanson, I hope I said your name right, titled Marijuana in the Buchanan Promise, and that was really, really disturbing. The statement that your position on the sale of medical marijuana is all about economics. There are so many people that are affected, and that's all of us in this community. And if your motivation is strictly about money and not about the medical value for people, I think you need to reevaluate. Secondly, a proposed growers license, and I read it, too, about elector voice. My goodness, that struck a chord. My children have played at that Little League field, my grandchildren have. They attended Stark School, and that should never, ever, ever be a consideration. It is in a residential area. Those are things that we all need to take into consideration when we're making any kind of a choice like that. And from another standpoint, we do have Stark School. It may be vacant right now, but I think that I could speak for everybody in Buchanan. We want people to move here, we want them to live here, we want them to call this home. And we would love it, I believe, if we had enough children to fill that school again. That's what we want to look forward to. I also, I also believe that there may really be a lack of knowledge about a grow operation and the smell that's associated with it. And if your view is strictly on dollars and it's not on the whole process and everything that's involved, then that's, once again, it's just a really narrow view. It doesn't take into consider everything, everything that's involved. As far as a dispensary right downtown, where our residents in Buchanan bring friends and family? That includes me, my, we come down for a thrill on the hill? Oh, no way.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Paula, we appreciate it. And just a reminder, if you want to regroup, we will be having another meeting on Monday, so those of you who were constrained by time, please feel free to visit again Monday. I would be like to proceed. Can we wrap it up?
Make a couple more calls to see if anybody's interested.
Yeah, please, I know public speaking isn't for everyone, trust me.
This is your chance to stand up and say what you're thinking. If you don't speak up, then you really don't have room to complain.
Yes, and you might regret it later.
Okay, I'm Kathy K, and I live at 111 West Third Street on Buchanan here. And I wasn't really going to say anything tonight, but, you know, by golly, I better. Because I don't want it in Buchanan. I absolutely do not want it anywhere near Buchanan. And that's just the way I feel. You know, I feel bad for the folks that need the marijuana. They feel that it helps them eat better and this and that, but, you know, if they could just go someplace else and buy it, it would make me a whole lot happier. And it sounds to me like a lot of other folks are behind me on that. And so I just thank you all who are standing up and saying, no, not in this city, because I don't want it. My husband wouldn't have wanted it. I was born in Niles, and of course, they keep you in the hospital a few days, the moms and the babies. And then when mom and daddy brought me home, I was raised on Chippewa Street, right here in Buchanan. And so I've lived over on Chippewa Street and then up in St. Joe for a while, and then Stevensville a while, and back to Buchanan. And so mostly, I've lived in Buchanan since 1953. And I just like the way it was then, the way it has been, and the way we have been going. And I just don't want the bad stuff that comes along with marijuana, because I too believe it leads to other drugs, and those are deadly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Corey Davis, I live at 323 Lake Street. I am for cannabis. From what I've learned, opposition to cannabis is a learned behavior like racism. As a child, I suffered two major injuries. I was prescribed pharmaceuticals for a period of time that had lifelong consequences. Cannabis counteracts the side effects of the pharmaceuticals and the injuries I sustained. As a result, I'm a force to provide my own medication. I either trust someone else to grow, and I compensate them for their services, or I supply my own. Since I trust myself with my own life, I supply my own. And that makes me a target not only for criminals, but the police. On September 15th, approximately 2:30 PM, my house was surrounded by a dozen men in masks and tactical gear, assault rifles, serving a search warrant. They came into my house and counted my plants, they weighed up my meds in front of my children, which I've never done. They saw that we were following state law, and they left. They said basically, sorry for the intrusion. There were two children under four napping at the time and a woman cooking and doing dishes. If there were local, legal, regulated outlets, people's children may not possess the memories that mine do. By being a cannabis patient, I've lost the right to protect my family because I can't possess guns, and the police can come in whenever they want. As far as restrictions, I believe that restrictions should be limited. Everywhere should be zone cannabis-friendly. Society would benefit by limiting alcohol, tobacco, the pharmaceutical market, painkillers. They kill more people yearly than cannabis ever has. And I feel that by the city zoning for and regulating a free market, the trickle-down effect on the economy will be greater than if it was restricted and bought out by corporate America. Buchanan's median income is like 42,000. Single-family homes hypothetically would be half or less, making those children available for things like free lunch, food stamps, insurance. If local jobs are provided making 30, 40, 50,000, then their income goes up and has a much broader effect on the local economy, other than just satisfying some investor's profit margin. People would be able to afford to purchase their own properties and invest in their own communities, because it is about more than the economics. It's about what's best for the people. My children love walking downtown. They love going to the sweet shop and hometown video. Those are traditions that I've had since I was a kid, which is why I supported the initial proposed location. Demographics aside, it was the last street on that side of Red Bud in city limits. When we went door-to-door down Bluff Street and Elizabeth, we received over 50 signatures out of 50 houses, including people that weren't even home. So those people are all directly affected, and we still received the majority of that vote. Another point is methadone clinics. You have methadone clinics for people addicted to heroin and prescription pills as a safe outlet for addicts to receive doses to be able to function.
I'm sorry, I'm going to need to cut you off.
Thank you for your time.
Nope, sorry, that's the rules for everybody.
What's your address, sir?
323 Lake Street.
Okay, I'm a neighbor.
Okay, you guys can hook up after the meeting, okay? All right. We still have about 27 minutes left. We don't want to end early if we don't have to, so. Are we going to take questions and answers? I thought this was just for city comment.
We, the city attorney's here if there's a question about the specific law. He can try to answer that. If not, we can research it and get back to people. But if you have any questions about the parameters of the law, he's here and available for that. We could use that remaining time for that. Anybody?
Go right ahead. Same thing with the microphone, though, please. Yes, please do, thank you. It's okay, sorry about that, but trying to be fair to everyone.
Well, I guess I have a question that, I mean, really, what you guys are doing is illegal if you pass the law to put it into Buchanan. The state may have approved it, but how are you going to come to terms with the fact that it's still against the law federally? Now, right now, I'm aware that the federal government is not enforcing these laws. That doesn't mean it may not change later, but the idea still exists that cannabis is illegal on a federal level. Buchanan would be in violation of federal law if you've guys passed this. So I don't know how you come to terms with that.
Okay, we're going to let the city attorney answer that for you. Thanks, Rick.
Actually, sir, with all due respect, that's, while it is, marijuana is illegal federally, the federal law does not preempt state law from legalizing or providing exemptions for medical marijuana, as Michigan has done and has done since 2008. Again, Buchanan, the new laws are opt-in laws. So Buchanan to, for Buchanan to allow a marijuana facility in the city limits, they would have to provide an ordinance allowing to do so. If Buchanan does nothing, then marijuana, or medical marijuana, the facilities, the licenses that the state will be issuing, starting in December 15th of 2017, will not be allowed in Buchanan if nothing is done. It is not a violation of federal law. It is allowing for Buchanan to provide an ordinance that does allow one or any number of those five licenses is not a violation of federal law, is not in violation of state law, is actually in line with the new state law.
So you're saying that cannabis falls under the Fifth Amendment, that the federal government has no regulations over it?
It's, the federal government cannot preempt Michigan's medical marijuana laws.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, sir, I was following.
So it's time for questions?
Yeah, excuse me.
Can we, can I have your name and address for the record again?
It's Eric, right?
My name is Eric.
Eric.
Eric. Last name?
H.O.G.D.I.A.
Thank you.
My name is Pastor Taylor, again, Church on Red Bud Trail. My question to you, if the people vote against it, could they put it in Buchanan?
It would have to be on the ballot.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be on the ballot, it won't be on the ballot. It's been left up to the commission to make their decision. So that's, you know, that's why we're having these public forums. That's why we had a work session to outline the parameters of what the law allows and doesn't allow. We've scheduled two public forums to hear the interest and pulse of the community on this issue, for the commissioners to hear. They'll weigh those comments and make a decision. So that's the process we're in right now.
I'd like to help you, Bill, on that, I really would. Now, there's a kicker here with everything, with everything. If this gets on the ballot to go recreational, you people aren't going to matter in the scheme of things and the way it works in the state's vote. Don't think that you don't matter, that's not what I'm saying. But if you vote, every one of yous vote no, think about Detroit, or Lansing, or Kalamazoo. So I mean, the reason why I am so pro-this is because I feel it's going to go recreational in 2018. Now, we've got two years to get ahead of this, so we can write the laws now in Buchanan for what we want then. If we don't, we might be chasing the horses around the pasture. So I mean, you got to think about, and it's probably, if I was betting man, I'd probably put $10,000 on the fact it's going to be on the ballot in 2018. If it gets put on the ballot, no matter what the school administrators think or the politicians think, people are going to come out of the woodwork to make it recreational. So think about that. We've got two years to get ahead of this, you know, and I don't want to be working behind it. We can restrict it, we can restrict it substantially, so.
Just a clarification, it's my understanding that if the city decides to opt in, they would write an ordinance that would describe it, and that ordinance would allow the city to limit how many of each type of the five type of licenses, even making some of those types of licenses not available? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, and I'm going to recognize Commissioner Attorney, he has something he would like to read to you.
Hello, how you doing? This is from the ARP Bulletin Magazine, from the January, February. This is from the ARP Bulletin Magazine from the January, February, two thousand seventeen. So this is fact. Okay, so if I can read this to you. Voters in California, Massachusetts, Nevada, and Maine approved recreational use of marijuana on Election Day, this past election. And voters in Florida, Arkansas, North Dakota, and Montana backed proposals on medical use, marking a sweeping referendum in favor of pot use. Only voters in Arizona, by a narrow margin, rejected an effort to expand legal use of the drug. While marijuana remains illegal at the federal level, pot is now lawful for recreational use in eight states, plus the District of Columbia, and for marijuana use in twenty-nine states, plus D C. And that appears to be a reflection of a rapidly changing mood in America. Nationwide, eighty-nine percent of people think marijuana should be allowed for medical use. According to a fall two thousand sixteen Gallup poll, the reason, the Mayo Clinic says pot has possible benefit for these with chronic pain, epilepsy, seizures, glaucoma, Coen's disease, nausea, related to cancer treatments, and several others. Another Gallup poll from two thousand fifteen showed that among these born between nineteen fifty-one and nineteen sixty-five, support for legalization had risen from thirty-five percent to fifty-eight percent since two thousand oh one. Among those born between nineteen thirty-six and nineteen fifty, it has risen from twenty-nine percent to forty percent. More states are likely to follow in two thousand eighteen with ballot measures for approving recreational use expected in Vermont, Rhode Island, Michigan, Delaware, and Connecticut. Among the main, among Americans ages fifty to sixty-four, over half reported in the two thousand fifteen National Survey of drug use and health having smoked marijuana at some point in their lifetime. Well, twenty-two percent age sixty-five-plus say they have done so. I'm just quoting from the ARP Magazine. So I'm just reading facts. So that can help everybody. Thank you. Sure, I guess.
You still need to go to the microphone, sorry. We're just trying to get all this on the record and our microphone won't pick up comments from the audience.
Thank you. Kathy Kay again on Third Street. I don't remember which, I think, which clinic that was, but you said that it was possibly.
I didn't say it, the article said it.
The article said possible.
It's from the Mayo Clinic. That, that says, yeah, it says pot is possible.
Possible, that's just possible. That doesn't mean that it is.
No, I'm just reading.
Okay. And I'd just like to make, oh, go ahead, sir. Oh, Norma? Oh, I'm sorry, Norma.
Norma Ferris again. You have asked for the public to come. Would you listen to us?
We are.
There is yes and there is no. Listen to us.
Honey, I've been writing everything down, word for word, I promise, and so is Gladys. We're, I don't know, we ta, we're taking this very seriously. We are not entering, oh, yes, do you wanna go ahead first? No, you can go right over to the microphone. No, you're good.
My name is Robert Tucker and I live at one eighteen Elizabeth Street. Okay. I used to be Paul Tucker. When I was Paul Tucker, I thought a whole lot different. Now I'm Grandpa Tucker. I just have one question to ask. Can anybody remember the last violent crime here in Buchanan? And if you can remember the last violent crime, how many? My only concern is I think about my grandkids. They are love of my life. I think about the environment that they are in, how they were raised. Buchanan might have problems, but we never had. The violent problem that other communities have. I like for us to think about that. I know I'm not the only parent. I'm a parent and a grandparent. But, boy, since I've got to be a grandparent, I look at things a whole lot different now, okay? So I ask this commissioner, whoever, think about the crime issue and think about the grandkids. Think about the kids.
Go right ahead, thank you.
Question period, and we have a lawyer here. And looking through all of the layer, all the regulations and guidelines that the state of Michigan.
Jeanne, can you get into the microphone?
At the state, I'm sorry, I was talking to him.
I know, thank you, but then we can all hear, thanks.
That the state of Michigan has guidelines for. So if the state of Michigan has guidelines, I know I was doing some research on this and some of the cities that already have medical dispensaries, they have an ordinance, or I don't know if it's some Michigan law or what, where a dispensary cannot be within so many feet of a residential area or residential, or homes. So taking all that, say if Buchanan would decide to go ahead with this, would Buchanan write their own ordinance saying that a dispensary could be within two hundred and fifty feet of, you know, a home? Or would you have to go with the guidelines of LARA?
Well, any dispensaries that are in the state of Michigan right now are technically in violation of state law. Any facility, dispensary, grower, processor, any of the five licenses that are going to be available through the state, are, the applications cannot be processed until December fifteenth of this year. So nowadays, if there are dispensaries located within Michigan municipalities, they are either, they're essentially being, the local police and prosecutors are looking the other way for various reasons. Once the licensing is, becomes valid, a city such as Buchanan certainly can regulate the type of licenses that are allowed, the number of licenses. The, the ordinance will most likely, if approved, treat it as a, be treated as, in the, under the zoning regulations. So you've got all, you've got many different, zoning is by definition limiting. You, it, you can have it as a special use permit, meaning that they're not a permitted use, they have to come before the city commission or the planning commission, and, and they will have special conditions. You can have it, again, you can only maybe have a grower in an ag or an industrial area. You can only have a processor or a dispensary, which are provisioning centers in commercial or retail. You can be, you could limit them as to, just like you can any other, I think some people mentioned, strip clubs or adult bookstores, convenience stores, bars. You can certainly limit them within, you know, how many ever feet from, from schools, from residential districts. Again, that's the, that's the whole purpose of, of having a zoning regulation and zoning ordinance that can be decided by the city commission.
By the city, so the city would determine if it could be in a residential area or not.
Laura will have additional administrative regulations that are just not out yet. And when we see those regulations from Laura, some of the regulations that the city may be thinking about putting in place may already be instituted by these new regs. We just, we just don't know yet.
Thank you, can you go up to the microphone again? Thanks. I know it's cumbersome.
Josh Elber from Lakeside. You know, in many cities, in conjunction with the new laws, have, you know, scoured every lot in the city. I mean, the city of Detroit has already set a zoning ordinance that identifies six hundred and forty-nine spaces where there could be a dispensary in the city of Detroit. So some municipalities are taking very strict and saying this location is designated for this and only this location. So that's where the, you know, the ordinance would, would come in.
Okay, thank you.
I'm William Haas, State Line Road and Isles. The, the city has the option, just like Mr. Vajanski said, to structure this before it gets out of control. I'm pro-cannabis, but I've seen the negative effects and I also know what's coming from it. And I honestly believe that if we come together as a community, this can be done correctly and effectively and take a lot of the negative sides out of it. And, you know, I heard some comments about money. Well, I'm telling you now, if my company was to come in here, I'm bringing a million dollars in here. Okay? That's gonna be spent on electricians, concrete workers. I mean, there's tons of stuff. Then the people I'm gonna employ, the, the employees will be making anywhere from thirty to a hundred thousand dollars a year working for my company. Not only am I gonna bring my company, but I'm also gonna be bringing a banking system to, to help the community. I wanna work every day with whatever community I put my company in. If I'm not wanted here, that's fine. I'll go find a community that does want me. You know, I'm not here to argue with you guys. I'm here to work with you guys if, if there's a need for it, you know? And there's, there's just tremendous amount. And I, I think it would do everybody a lot of good to go out and educate yourself on both sides, not just the negative or not just the positive, but weigh both sides, look at what's gonna happen in the state, and, and then make your decisions on what you're gonna do. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Why don't you check with him after the meeting? Thank you, yeah. Okay, hang on, we got somebody else a minute.
H T Williams again from Fulton. Why, if this is a drug, why haven't the pharmaceutical facilities got involved? You know? I wanna have an answer to that.
I'll answer that. Because the FDA hasn't gotten their money because the federal government outlawed it in nineteen thirty-five because they legitimized, I can't get it out, alcohol. It was a trade-off. We stopped prohibition and made marijuana illegal. That was the whole thing. And if you read the history books, it's eighty-eight years of propaganda. Marijuana is not a class one. We've been propagandized for ninety years that marijuana is a bad drug. The Indians smoked it in their peace pipe. You know, the Europeans don't even look at it as the same thing. There's all kind, you, you know, I know you worked with it, but I, I've got an illness too, so I've got some experience in it. But the thing about it is, is it's, don't just read, I mean, when I was in school, this is very personal to me too, in a sense, 'cause I've been listening to the same propaganda since high school. We don't have drugs in our school. What a crock! And I'm not saying about right now. Don't, don't say no, 'cause I don't want Andrea down here again. When I was in high school in nineteen seventy-one, let's make that clear, nineteen seventy-one, we don't have drugs in our school. Stick your head in the sand. I wanna get ahead of this. This is my whole purpose of listening to all of you. I want to make the laws so that everyone can benefit. I don't see a big criminal increase, just in my personal experiences. It's propaganda. It's police state mentality and propaganda. Please, Google it. We're in contact with Colorado on a regular basis. They made some real mistakes. We got two years to jumpstart on this. And if it goes legal recreational, we're all gonna be in trouble. That's the only way you can sum it up.
So what about the facts that were read and his comments and the comments that she read about the negative effects of marijuana?
He read positive.
I didn't, I'm just, they were positive. I, I didn't, and I was just reading from the ARP Magazine.
And mostly that was perception, how people feel about it, not necessarily what, you know, what the effects were. Okay, thank you.
I'm Eric. I'm not gonna stand here and refute you, although I did work with it and I'm way on a different viewpoint than you on this. But the reason I'm coming up here is I heard you talking about preparing for this. I suspect that eventually you're right that Bu, that the state of Michigan is going to make it recreational. I see this whole thing as a stepping stone. At the same time, we don't know that and we're doing something based on a projection. I think Buchanan needs to do what's right. And if we have to deal with the consequences later, then we deal with the consequences later. But Buchanan needs to do what's right for Buchanan. And if it doesn't pass, we don't know that it will. The vote hasn't been taken. And if it doesn't pass, I don't wanna see Buchanan stuck with this menace and everything that's gonna come along with it.
Okay, are there any other citizens that wanna make comments? Because I would like to speak for a couple of minutes if I could. Okay. We had a meeting last week where we heard our city attorney read the law for over an hour. He deserves a medal for that. Yes, thank you. This is the PowerPoint from that presentation. What I took away from is, first of all, I love Buchanan just as much as everybody else. It's the reason I'm sitting here tonight. I had two children, I was a single mother. They've grown up to be outstanding young men because of neighbors like you that watched out for them and when they were being naughty on their bikes, you brought them back to my house and knocked on my door. And, you know, we are a very close-knit, caring community. And sometimes, you know, this, this isn't a simple matter for us. We're not glib about this. We're not, we're losing sleep over this. We've had heated discussions with our coworkers and neighbors and family and friends. There are no simple solutions to this. But what I took away from our attorney going through the law with us is that if I sit down in my garage some night and I'm like, hey, let's open a dispensary, or hey, let's open a growing operation, or hey, I bought a truck. I'm gonna start transporting this. It, it's not like that at all because there are hoops after hoops after hoops after hoops with this law. And the people that are going to take this on as a business to try to make a livelihood, they have their work cut out for them. And it's my understanding that you can have the financing, you can have the insurance, you can have all of your ducks in a row and you go to the meeting where they grant you your license. And if they think, there's a clause, if they think you're of poor moral character, they can tell you no, even though you have done everything else. You've gone through the background checks, they've talked to your family and friends. It, it's not like anyone can just show up and say, I wanna do this. You, you gotta be ready. And it's, you know, if you've ever opened a business, it's complicated. But this is even more so. And it seems to me that there's a provision in the law that if you're not doing the right thing and you're not keeping control of your business and there's, you know, undesirable people that we keep bringing up, hanging around for, you know, to attract children or do things that are not in accordance with the law, they can be shut down really easily. So this isn't, it's scary, yeah, because we don't know. This is all new to all of us. But please be assured that we, as a commission, and our leader, you know, the city manager, and all of us, we really care about this and we want to make the right decision. We're a compassionate community that cares for each other and we are not just gonna jump into this blindly. That's why we're taking this time and having meetings and letting you speak and asking us tough questions. And if you come away tonight, I'm gonna wrap it up 'cause it's eight-thirty, but if you come away from tonight and, you know, sometimes you don't always think of those hard questions or you want more information. or you want more information or you think of something you wish you would've said, please, we all have email addresses. All of our information is available on the website. You can call here, you can leave messages. We have an answering machine that you can leave a message twenty-four hours a day. We want to make a very informed decision and we are taking this very seriously. So I hope, I think, wanna thank everybody for coming tonight. I appreciate the respect I saw between neighbors and friends, even though we don't all agree. And I'm very encouraged that you all came. And if you want to come, our next meeting will be Monday night at seven. It's gonna be the same format, so, thank you. And I would like to call this meeting to a close. Thank you.